Good evening. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session for April 7, 2015. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign our Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And this is in our reference to our Board Policy 8340. Good evening. As we do, I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. Let's do that.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This evening, we do have student proclamations, Mr. President. This is the time of the year when we have quite a few students we'd like to recognize, so we are having proclamations this evening at the work session. And we are very pleased this evening to recognize members of the 2014-2015 Night Crier staff. And with us this evening, we have those students and their advisor, Mr. Manero.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, guys, so much for having us tonight. A little intimidated by all the elementary school musicians out there. They are in big numbers, so I'll be quick so they can come in. I'm very pleased tonight to announce that several of our students from the Night Crier received awards this year in the Keystone State Press Awards, which every year, the high schools from all over the state of Pennsylvania submit articles, photographs, their layout and design, their entire news site as a whole, for awards. And every year, about late February, early March, we get the word. And this year, we were very privileged to have several awards bestowed upon us. Just a couple of things about Night Crier before we recognize the individuals that are here tonight. This is actually our fourth school year going digital. And in four years, we've published 1,852 articles on nightcrier.org, which you see on the screen. Real impressive work by our kids. I mean, I am blessed, privileged to have such outstanding individuals. These are kids that I think the highest compliment you can give anybody is that you would invest in them someday. And I think I'd invest in every one of these kids. They're hardworking, good writers. We cover a wide variety of things. Actually, last week, we had some April 1 articles. I don't know if any of you got to see them. Some of them, you know, maybe they're not all that unrealistic if we put our minds together and we can work on some things. So give that a thought if you haven't seen them yet. But up on the site, we have all kinds of things. And you can see that we, wide variety of categories: news, editorials, sports, features, all kinds of stuff. Actually, a lot of photographs as well, which one of our students is being recognized for tonight. I got an email about two weeks ago from a retired North Penn School District Administrator. He's in his 80s. And he says he reads the Night Crier every day. And I think that's what's changed the most about going digital, is that our audience is different. It's not necessarily students and teachers just in the building, but it's the whole community as a whole. And these students right here write things that are read by the entire world. So to have some of those receive awards is extra special. So tonight, we have receiving awards. First, we have Brooke McCoy, who received an award for first place in feature photo. Our second award recipient is Scott Vogel. Scott submitted three editorials, and he received first place for his series of editorials. Also wrote a very strong one last week in the Night Crier that's still up there, if anybody gets a chance to take a look at that one. And representing the honorable mention of feature article is Dan Sardaro and Fio Hussein. They wrote an article about a kid who rides his bike to school every day, except that his bike only has one wheel. And he's known as the unicycle kid. So you might see him around Lansdale. And that was an article they wrote at the beginning of the year. And the award that, as a whole, as a staff, we're most proud of, that Dan would have been accepting tonight, also with our other editor, Tara Sorman, who was unable to be here, was that we received first place for best website in the state of Pennsylvania. And we're also very, very proud to say that in our four years of being digital, it's the second time that we've received that award. So very hard work from all these people.
We're gonna ask for an opportunity for the full administration, the full board to congratulate each and every one of you. Would you come through? Kevin, would you please join him at the end?
Sure.
Yeah. Is there a clip? Or is this one?
It's just one.
Congratulations again. Congratulations to the guys.
Why shouldn't you post something?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Awesome. This is cool. I think this wasn't after.
Yeah.
Thanks. Please, another round of applause for these guys.
We are also pleased this evening to recognize the sixth grade members of our 2014-2015 Bridle Path Montgomery Elementary School Select String Ensemble. And with us this evening, we have Mr. Jackson.
Good evening. My name's Ralph Jackson. Thank you for having us here tonight. It's exciting for these elementary students and a privilege for them to be able to meet the school board members and the upper administrators. I have with me members of the Bridle Path Montgomery Select String Ensemble. We have, at Bridle Path Montgomery, we have an orchestra of 120 and an advanced orchestra of 60. And then we have our Select String Ensemble, which is our premier group of about 30 students. So I have our sixth grade members with us tonight. Last week, well, we auditioned in last spring to perform at Carnegie Hall, and they were accepted. They were the only elementary school that was accepted. They performed along with high schools from California, actually, were the other nominees. And we performed last Thursday night at Carnegie Hall to a huge standard ovation. They did an excellent job. They made their parents and North Penn School District and our community very proud. So I will present these sixth grade members to you. We have Josie Biddle. Thank you.
Ralph, as an opportunity, guys, you're gonna come through and shake all the hands of all the central administrators and the full board as an opportunity to us to congratulate you. Ralph, would you please join him at the end? Come on through, guys. (Applause). Congratulations. Lovely smile. Hold on, sir. Hold on again. Hold on again, sir. Hold on. Congratulations again. Congratulations again. Congratulations, Christian. Ralph, you're awesome. Your program's so awesome. Another round of applause for these guys. Before you guys leave to join them, we want to remind you, you can revisit this when we rebroadcast it, April 8 at 7:30 p.m., April 9 at 12:30 and 7:30. Again, April 10, 12:30 and 7:30. And on Monday, 12:30. And that's on Channel 28 and FiOS 29 for us. Another round of applause for you guys. The program is endless, endless and reward for us.
Unbelievable. Thank you so much.
No shortage of outstanding achievers.
They're incredible. They're incredible. You're welcome.
Let's give them a minute. I just want to point out that, Frank, you moved over here and everybody left.
That's the effect I have on people.
All right, we're gonna move forward with our work session agenda this night.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Tonight's work session, we are joined by Tina Valetto, who's the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Director of Community and Government Relations, and Larry Feinberg, circuit rider for the Campaign for Fair Educational Funding. They're going to spend about 30 minutes talking to us about how school districts are funded in Pennsylvania, the history behind this funding, and the work of the Legislature's Commission to support the establishment of a fair funding formula. Tonight's informational session will be followed up with a community forum on Thursday, April 23, at 7 o'clock p.m. in the Pendale Middle School Auditorium. At this time, in addition to Ms. Valetto, State Representative Kate Harper and State Representative Todd Stevens will be on hand to discuss this very important topic and answer questions from our community. I've been involved in the, at the state level on this very topic, and I provided testimony to the Commission earlier in the school year. I do encourage everyone from our community to attend the community forum on April 23. We did have a presentation a little while ago, and we had Board Member Murphy and Board Member Charnock with me that evening. And we all agreed it would be important to have this aired on a public meeting here in North Penn and get behind this concern. So without any additional intro, if we go to Tina and Larry, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. This is a topic of conversation that's been going on for a very, very long time in Pennsylvania. The issue of funding for education has been talked about over the years. Where do districts get their funds? Well, everyone knows that they open up their real estate tax bill, and they recognize that a portion of their property taxes go to support the schools. But more so than that, the question is, how much does the state support and how much does the federal government support? Each district is different, of course. Some districts receive a greater amount of support from their local taxpayers as opposed to from the state or federal government. In Montgomery County, we have a majority of the funding for our schools funded through the property taxes. So the Pennsylvania Constitution mandates that the state provide a thorough and efficient public school system. That question of thorough and efficient public school system is under question right now. There is currently a pending lawsuit with regard to what is a thorough and efficient public school system regarding school funding. But when we look at basic education funding, this is a particular line item in the state budget. It is called the basic education funding line. This is the line item that school districts get from the state each year. For the 2014-15 school year, the state allocated $5.5 billion in basic education funding, and that represented 55% of total funding for school districts. The remaining funds for districts are allocated on other line items in the state budget. So they're either via formula or known factors, such as transportation, pension costs, social security costs, food services, and school construction. And there's some question as to whether the school construction costs are funded right now. But districts can use that basic education funding line for teachers, curriculum, books, or other needs that don't fall under the other specific line items. So how does the state determine what that basic education funding is for the schools? You would think there'd be a formula, but sadly, there is not. At this moment in time, there is no clear and consistent determination as to how a district receives its funds. Looking back in the past, in between 1966 and 1983, Pennsylvania did have a formula. It was based on district wealth, instructional costs, the number of students, poverty, and sparsity of population. In 1983, this was slightly modified, but there was still a formula. And it stayed in place until 1992. Then, with the exception of a period between 2008 and 2011, Pennsylvania has been without a formula. What changed in 2008? At that time, there had been a costing-out study that was conducted. It looked at, and some of you may have participated in that study, and it looked at the actual costs associated with educating our children throughout the Commonwealth. Without a formula, districts have worked under a hold harmless provision, meaning that the districts receive as much as the previous year without regard to the district's changing demographics. So either growing or decreasing enrollment, it does not get reflected in the state's distribution. Hold harmless doesn't take into account a district's poverty rates. It doesn't take into account the population of English-language learners. It does not take into account charter school enrollment, and it doesn't take into account the local tax burden. So over the past year, some districts have received supplements based on changing factors. Those increases have changed depending on what funds were advocated for in certain parts of this state. But there has been no clear and consistent formula. So our current funding situation with a lack of funding formula poses many issues to districts. Without a formula, districts have a hard time determining how they're going to fund all the needs that face the school district throughout each year. And without a formula, it is possible that over 50% of districts won't have enough revenue to cover the mandatory and necessary costs by 2017-18. With that in mind, districts have been seeking predictable, reliable, sustainable, basic education formula. So there has been an effort to look at the problem. And Larry Feinberg is going to discuss what's being done at the state level by our legislators to look at this problem, but also to look at how we, in the education community and in the community at large, can make an impact with regard to this lack of a funding formula.
Thank you all for having me this evening. I'm a school board member, a 16-year school board member in Haverford Township. And I just want to say, it was great seeing those kids up here tonight, your young writers and your young musicians. And I want to thank each and every one of you for not making any "how do you get to Carnegie Hall" jokes during the board meeting. Back in, I guess, January of last year, Governor Corbett came out with a public statement that acknowledged the need for Pennsylvania to put together a school funding formula. And shortly afterwards, State Representative Bernie O'Neil from Bucks County introduced a bill to form a Basic Education Funding Commission. That bill became law, and that commission was constituted. It has six members from the Senate, six from the House, and four from the governor's administration. And includes, I guess, the chair is Pat Brown from the Lehigh Valley, who's also the chairman of the Senate Appropriations Committee. Locally, we're represented by co-chair Mike Verb from Montgomery County and Senator Dinaman, who's the minority chair of the Senate Ed Committee, is on there. That Basic Ed Funding Commission has had, I guess, 10 or 12 hearings at this point all over the state. They have heard from superintendents, school business managers. They've heard from national experts, whatever that means, on school funding. And they've heard from large, small, rich, poor, urban, suburban, rural. It's a big state. There's 500 school districts. And if you've had a chance to get out and about, they really vary in their needs. I think the good thing is that, at this point, having, I attended a few of those hearings, and I've watched a few of those hearings, and I think the folks on the commission understand the size of the elephant at this point. They know what the moving parts are. They are charged with issuing a report sometime in June. And we're, you know, we're basically in a holding pattern to see what that's going to look like. There are some significant issues. One is the whole notion of adequacy. And the other large issue that the commission grappled with was this hold harmless that Tina mentioned. On the adequacy side, the last time that the state looked at funding during the costing-out study, which I think was 2008, they came up with a shortfall of about $4 billion. Given the fact that there was, I think, a $2 billion deficit coming in for this administration, and that the average pension increase for the 500 school districts is $1 million this year, I don't know where $4 billion is gonna come from. But anyway, we're very much waiting to see what the Basic Ed Funding Commission recommends. At the same time, there are a few other endeavors underway, parallel efforts in terms of basic education funding. I've been hired as a circuit rider by five of the professional organizations: Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools, Pennsylvania School Boards Association, Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators, and the Pennsylvania Association of Intermediate Units. And they hired, I guess, 12 circuit riders, they called us. Most of them were retired superintendents. A couple of school board members snuck in, and I was one of them. Our mission is to work with school leaders to build support and political will for the establishment of a fair, adequate, predictable, and sustainable basic education funding formula, hopefully by 2016. As far as school leaders, that's defined as school board members, superintendents, administrators, school business officials. And so the circuit riders have been attending the superintendent's meetings at the various IU's around the state, the business manager's meetings at the IU's. But we've also hit some of the statewide meetings and trying to provide an overview of the funding process and to get them to engage with their legislators. So we talked about the circuit riders, talked about the Basic Ed Funding Commission. Third is the Campaign for Fair Education Funding. And that's a statewide coalition of 50 different organizations, and it's a pretty diverse group of organizations. It's not just the usual suspects. You do have the professional organizations and education advocacy groups, but there are also representatives from the various school reform groups in the state. There were a number of representatives from business organizations. There were representatives from faith-based organizations. There are representatives from organized labor. And to have these 50 different groups sitting at a table and keeping most of them at the table over several months has been an exercise in herding cats, I think is a fairly accurate description. That organization broke into subcommittees, and they, you know, one of their committees was charged with coming up with a suggested formula. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about that formula in a minute. The list of organizations is in your packet. And there's also a mission and principles sheet. And the mission of the Campaign for Fair Education Funding is to ensure that Pennsylvania adopts and maintains an adequate and equitable system of funding public education by 2016. Every public school must have the resources necessary to enable every child to meet state academic standards, be prepared for post-secondary success, and become productive, knowledgeable, and engaged adults. Educating our children is a collective imperative that has positive social and economic benefits for the Commonwealth and its communities. In terms of the campaign principles, you can read the detail, but the four main bullets, number one, accuracy is important. So the folks who were working with this dug for the data and went to the primary sources of data at the state level. Second, that the students and schools need stability, so this new system has to be transparent, sustainable, and long-range. Third, responsibility is shared, and that it's based on shared fiscal responsibility among the local community, the state, individuals, and commercial taxpayers. And fourth, that accountability is required and is a key element, that it has to include strong accountability standards to ensure that schools are investing efficiently and effectively to boost student achievement. In terms of the suggested formula, it starts out with a base amount per student. And right now, the number of students you have in your district has nothing to do with how much money you get. And, you know, one of the prime examples of this is the Centennial School District over in Warminster lost a military base a few years ago, and I think a third of their students went away. And it didn't impact their funding. The reverse is also true. I don't know how much building, you know, has gone on here, how many of the farms I passed on the way here have been planted with crops of new houses. And so I don't know what your census has looked like, but, you know, more students, less students has nothing to do with the funding. In the budget, a year ago, when there was extra money to distribute after the hold harmless had been satisfied, it basically went to school districts that had powerful legislators, committee chairs, leadership members. And the way that happens is they sit in a room and construct language that doesn't specifically say the name of the school district, but it provides enough specific details that it could only be that specific school district. And that's great for the kids that live in the districts that have powerful legislators, but all the kids in all the districts are our collective responsibility. So the formula starts with a base amount. The campaign has arrived at a base figure of $7,266. Once you, per student. Once you do that multiplication, it's then modified primarily by two groups of factors. The first are student factors, and that, those are things like how many students are in poverty, as measured by your free and reduced student lunch. How many students are in concentrated poverty? There's a, you know, there's a break there and an acknowledgement that it makes it a little tougher to educate. How many students are English-language learners? How many are in foster care? So recognizing that each of those instances requires additional resources to help those children. And homeless was the other one. How many, how many students are in concentrated poverty? There's a, you know, there's a break there and an acknowledgement that it makes it a little tougher to educate. How many students are English language learners? How many are in foster care? So recognizing that each of those instances requires additional resources to help those children.
Homeless.
And homeless was the other one in this, Tina. There's also a few different district factors, and that looks at the total wealth of the community, and the tax burden, and the ability to pay. Another adjustment would be for the number of kids that you have in charter schools, recognizing that there are stranded costs, that just because 30 kids leave a school district, it doesn't mean that you've been able to reduce any expenses in that district. The estimated shortfall, when they ran the numbers, was $3.6 billion, which is pretty close to $4, if we go back to the 2008 costing out study. That's a lot of money. The campaign is pushing for a six-to-eight-year phase-in, which, if my math skills still work at all, I think is around $475, $475 million per year over eight years. Another effort that's been underway, that Tina briefly mentioned, is that there's a lawsuit has been filed. The plaintiffs include six different school districts from all over the state, and also the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools, and the NAACP. I think that's the group. That they had their first hearing in Commonwealth Court about two weeks ago. There was a similar lawsuit about a dozen years ago, that, over a period of years, worked its way up to the state Supreme Court. And the court determined that it was not a judiciable issue, and kicked it back to the legislature. So what's happened in a dozen years that would lead these folks to think that it's worth taking another shot? Well, what's happened is that the state has now pretty much defined what a thorough and efficient education is. We now have state standards, and we have exams that are based on those state standards that determine whether kids are going to be able to graduate. So if we talk about thorough and efficient, and the responsibility, the constitutional responsibility of the state to provide a thorough and efficient education, we now have a pretty clear idea of what that translates to. What I'm hearing on the lawsuit is that it's pretty sure that it's going to go up to the Supreme Court again, and we don't exactly know how long that's going to take. So between the Basic Ed Funding Commission, where we'll see a report in June, the Campaign for Fair Education Funding, which is continuing its activities, and the school lawsuit, there's a lot of collective energy going into this process. And kind of brings us to the governor's proposed budget, where, if I'm not mistaken, he's calling for a basic ed funding increase of $400 and some million, which isn't a surprise. When you look at that budget, I guess there's a, you know, there's been a, a bit of the budget issue has played out in public. They, there were some letters traded. You know, the legislature leadership sent out letters saying, "Don't count on the money." And the Secretary of Education sent a letter to the superintendent saying, "Tell us how you're going to use the money." If you haven't already looked at, there's a couple of websites. The Wolf Administration published a website called Schools That Teach, where you can plug in your, you can search for your school district, and it will show you what your increase in the basic ed subsidy would look like under, excuse me, under his proposal. Other pieces of his proposal include reducing cyber charter payments, so it would show you your savings in cyber charter payments. And you can, you can get a pretty good snapshot of what the governor's budget, how it would impact your school district. Not surprisingly, about a week later, I think Senator Adolf, who's the chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, announced Tax Payers That Pay website. Same, same deal. You can go in, plug in your school district name, and that website will show you sort of what the governor has proposed in savings for your district. And that also includes significant property tax reductions. But the, the House Appropriations, Tax Payers That Pay website also estimates what the increases in other taxes would look like, and kind of comes up with an aggregate impact on your school district. So it's worth taking a look at both of those to see what the different sides are saying. The first one is Schools That Teach, and the second one is Tax Payers That Pay. And if you Google either of those, you should, you should hit them pretty clearly.
I think at our finance committee, did we just see something like that? Where we saw $54 million goes out of North Penn School District, and 15 comes back in?
Right.
Isn't that what we just saw?
That's correct. That's on the Tax Payers That Pay website.
We used to have that argument all the time with local legislators. You send them a buck at a quarterback. It's been like an endless fight for us.
I printed out your sheets from both of those websites, so you, you know, when you get there, you'll, you'll know what they look like. So, you know, there were sort of two things I want, I hope to do this evening. The first was to give you an overview of the efforts that are underway, and I think, think I've done that. The second is, and the main reason I'm here, is to encourage you as strongly as possible to engage in this process. That, you know, if we jump back, when I talked about the mission of the circuit riders, it's to build support and political will. And what that translates to is you all making your legislators aware of what your numbers look like, and how these various proposals might impact your students, your district, your taxpayers. Once the Basic Ed Funding Commission issues a report, theoretically, you know, by that magic sausage-making machine, it'll get translated into legislation. So there's a period of time from now until that bill actually becomes a bill, where there's some opportunity to try and help inform our legislators. And when I looked you guys up, if you're, you know, you should be a country by yourself. You'll have eight legislators that, if I, if I got that right, you got four, no, seven, I'm sorry.
Seven.
Three, three state senators and four state representatives. So, you know, I would encourage you to, you know, I don't know how, what kind of relationships you have with these folks, but-
Excuse me. Just so you know, not this year, but there were several of us that met with the four state reps in here. We've done that, not this year, but a couple of years in a row. So they hear our concern. But I just got to tell you one thing, and I don't mean to stop here. There was one state rep right next to me. I said, "We're being hit with charter schools." I said, "We can't afford this." "So what?" I was stunned. I told Kate Harper the next day.
Your arguing, no, tell them about the argument over the political will. You've got some people here on the payroll with some of these groups that fight us. So how do they, how are we supposed to combat that? With sheer might, sheer will, hope, goodwill?
Well, you know, the things, the folks that are on the payroll are going to keep doing what they're going to keep doing. And, you know, in terms of what we can do, and again, you know, I'm a school board member.
I know.
You know, so I've been fighting this fight for 16 years, and I'm stupid enough to run again.
[laughing]
You know, number one-
Yeah, but see, you-
Number one is, you know, is to stay informed, and this is part of this process this evening. I think Tina does a pretty great job at-
She does.
-with the legislative meetings at the IU. Number two is, you know, encourage involvement in the process. Keep your board engaged. Anytime that you're in a position to put your numbers together, and slap a cover letter on it, and send it out to these seven people, and the governor's office, and the chairman of the education committees, and the chairman of the appropriation committees, it can't hurt. The more school boards they hear from, and the more value you can provide to them, which means specific examples of how these proposals would impact your kids and your taxpayers.
There's not even a question. We, I recently received some correspondence from a local state legislator. We losing this. We lose big time. There is going to be more money drawn out of North Penn under the governor's proposal than even comes, close to coming back. It's almost like they're going after the schools that have, you know, I don't want to call them rich schools, and are like taking money and putting, and like, you know, distribution of the wealth type of idea. And I find that repulsive. I think it's just terrible to do that. I'm not saying that, you know, and then, of course, that the property taxing, they want to lower property tax, and then they want to establish new taxes. Why don't you get rid of property tax if you're going to bring a new tax? And it never seems, it seems like a vicious circle of tax and spend, instead of being more a stewardship-
I hear you.
...of what we have to deal with.
I hear you, but, but, oh, okay.
Just to address that, the governor's proposed budget is just that, a proposal.
Right.
They are going through the machinations of determining how they're going to distribute everything. This issue, though, regarding the formula, is different. And the difference is that you have growing needs within your district. Determining how that funding comes about, based on your student population, should be a factor. There are things that are happening within your district and every other district that are totally disregarded. And so regardless of what happens with the proposal that's on the table by the governor, because that certainly is something that's going to be many months in the making of wrangling, determining how that's going to benefit or not benefit. But with regard to this campaign for fair education funding, there's a difference there. And that is the number of people that are at the table that are all saying the same thing.
Right.
So they're not, we, we made a pact from the very beginning, and I've been at every meeting pertaining to the campaign itself. And one of the things that we had to come to a recognition of is that everybody around the table views the budget in a different way. That proposal is just that. It's a budget proposal. However, each one of us around the table, and that's the business communities, the charter school community, the faith-based organizations, all those other organizations, they're saying, you know, "We're not going to talk about the budget, but we are going to talk about what factors should be taken into account regarding school funding."
Right.
So talking about the governor's budget, that is a discussion that everyone will be having for months to come. But our purpose is to talk about the funding system, and the reality regarding what factors do drive the education costs.
Tina, just even student accountability. You mentioned the airbase. Kate Harper told us, I think, the last legislative breakfast, not the one, but a year ago, Philadelphia was being paid 70, excuse me, had 76,000, 76,000 extra students that they were being, that paid for with this, this money here, times 76 is what they got, in addition to crying wolf every year.
And so those are the factors. So the reality is, is that we do have districts within Montgomery County that are sharing a term, the residences, the residents of those particular school districts are paying a significant amount. Your district has a commercial base. Many districts in Montgomery County do not. And in so doing, the residents of each of those communities are paying a pretty penny for, for funding what really needs to be looked at from an equitable standpoint. And that's the purpose of the Fair Funding Campaign.
You know, the state share, I think, right now of, of the basic ed funding is about 34, 37%, somewhere.
34.
34%. And there was a time when it was 50.
Yeah, they have never kept pace with, with growing expenses. Let alone the mandates, and federal, and the state and federal mandates. They mailed us with the check.
But that difference has all been picked up by local property taxpayers.
Sure.
Now, I'm almost finished with, you know, my presentation, so let me just get through the last couple of bullet points here. And again, in terms of advocacy, and I agree with Tina, it's, you know, I'm not going to say focus on the governor's budget, you know, it's a proposal. But I, I would urge you to, once the Basic Ed Funding Commission issues a report, you want to look at that report, and you want to see how that, how that report would impact you. And I think that the Campaign for Fair Education Funding will probably be issuing responses to that report, once it's out. Same thing. You know, your input can shape those formulas. And the better that, the better that you're engaged, and the better that all the school districts in the state are engaged, the better chance we have of counterbalancing some of the folks who are paid to do what they're paid to do every day.
I can't imagine how you're going to be able to undo the political will of those who want to spend money where they get their votes from.
That's right. That's my concern, though.
I mean, that's exactly what the governor's budget is. It's a distribution of everywhere he gets votes from, and nothing else.
Okay, but that budget wasn't formulated under this concept, right?
No.
This campaign.
No.
So, and this campaign is trying to force them to do that, right? With some sort of, what?
It's trying to build a basic funding formula.
An amendment to the constitution?
But if you look at the elements in that formula, we still get-
No, not an amendment to the constitution. I think that, you know, most likely, there would be, there would be a bill that, that would establish a funding formula.
Okay.
And that's what, that's what we're looking for.
Well, okay, there's a couple of things I had. Machination is a great word. I don't even know what it means, but I was, I'm impressed with that. I'm going to look it up. Okay, and then, one, the funding formula, I noticed, well, I didn't see it in the brief that I, that I received, a coefficient for special education costs, and any consideration for special education?
Do you want to address that?
That actually falls into a different funding line item. The Special Education Funding Commission was formed a year ago. They did come up with a formula for special education that, that, that had a tiered system based on the needs of the special, the special education population, but it was pertaining to any new monies that came towards special education, so it's not the same as the best. Remember I explained, the basic education funding line is that's, is a separate line from the special education population.
Okay, so this cost per student doesn't include transportation costs, nutrition, food nutritional costs, special educational costs?
Transportation line item is a separate line item.
So, okay, it was my understanding, misunderstanding, that this was all going to be brought in, under one number, so that's not the case here.
No. No, the basic education funding line is still, even, even if the governor's proposal went through, it's still one line item, basic education funding.
And this is the state contribution to that line item? Is that what we're talking?
It's a determination of the distribution of those state funds under that line item.
Okay.
Do you think it'll be a comparative versus a sheer numbers issue? In other words, you know, you're never going to compare us, the Philadelphia School District, when it comes to poverty, ELL, all the other things. They're going to outdo us 50 to 1. So how are we ever going to get equity in that situation?
There will be equity based on your numbers, and based on those other, those other factors that go into it with regard to your, you know, I was just looking at the different-
Some benefits being a bigger district.
There is, there is some benefit there, because you do have an ELL population.
Sure we do. That's the argument with the rural ones and, and schools. That's the whole lawsuit. They don't have populations big enough to defend themselves in that matter.
And you do have a growing populate, growing enrollment that I am certain that has not been taken into account. And Dr. Dietrich could probably corroborate that, that-
You want to argue?
With this growing enrollment, you have not been taken into account.
We face the potential of two charter schools. Philadelphia has 128. How are we ever going to compare against these, in this, in this basic funding education formula, using these factors, other than the Hold Harmless?
Well, Philadelphia and Pittsburgh are going to be in and of themselves, so don't compare yourselves to Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. We're looking at the other districts throughout the Commonwealth.
So who's, I'm going to call it framework. Who's opposed to this framework for school funding?
Well, I can tell you that those dist- Well, I can tell you that those districts that are, that fall within the hold harmless and benefit from the hold harmless right now that have, have seen a reduction in enrollment, but are still getting the money.
Right, still getting the money.
Those districts are, there are quite a few that are falling under it. Now, looking at the formula, the campaign had to take into account the fact that we do not want to harm any district, but there has to be a phasing in period so that under this proposal that the campaign has, it reduces the numbers of districts that, that actually would be under that hold harmless provision to about eighteen throughout the state. And the numbers are far greater than that now. We have many, many districts that have seen.
Hundreds?
Yes. We have seen many districts with declining enrollment and yet they still get the same dollars regardless of the fact that they have less students.
On Thursday, April 23rd, when we have, you know, a full evening dedicated to this topic, we, we didn't intend to get into every detail this evening, of course. So on the April 23rd, I mean, we will have a slide that will show the impact of hold harmless. And if you look back in the case of North Penn, had we continued to have the formula that was in place when it was abandoned, when they went to a, like a two percent increase at the minimum in the hold harmless to make sure you don't take any less than the year before, et cetera, and that was built upon and built upon and built upon over all those years, had we still be using that particular formula, North Penn would be getting much more money than we're getting right now from the state. And we have those figures, we'll share all those the evening of the 23rd, but it is very eye-opening because we have had substantial growth in the school district from way, way back. And we have not seen any kind of adjustment other than that, you know, maybe a two percent increase over what we got the year prior. So within this county, for example, Perk Valley is, is the poster school district for the major impact they've had due to the fact that they simply have gotten a percent increase or two percent increase or whatever it might be over the previous year's subsidy. Just unbelievable in that district. Virtually all the districts in Montgomery County save two should be getting quite a bit more money than they're getting if we would be continuing to use what was used the last time we had a formula. So, but there are a lot of districts across the state that on the slide I'll show you that are actually getting more than they would be getting if they would have continued using that particular formula. So we understand that they can't have a huge hole in their budget all at one time and there has to be concern about that in terms of a phasing in. But this is a very, very important topic, one that has a lot of facets to it. I really look forward to the 23rd of April. We're going to get into a lot of detail that night about the issue. It has a lot of facets to it. There are no easy answers to this, no doubt about that. But it's critically important that all of us get engaged and you're involved. I want to encourage again those that are watching from home that you come out the evening of the 23rd, get involved in this issue. It has a, has a major impact in public education in Pennsylvania.
You know, I can tell you that there are, you know, there are, there's a lot of energy being mobilized around the state on this. There are, there have been a, a series of public forums in the mid-state. I know that we're, we're planning one in, out in Delaware County at the end of the month. They're working on plans for one in Lehigh County. And, you know, I think given, given these parallel efforts that are underway and the fact that, you know, we, the, the last governor left Harrisburg on account of education funding, plain and simple. And the legislature is aware of that. So something's going to change. How much it changes and how it changes remains to be seen. If, if we sit on the sidelines, we'll have no say.
We can't do that. We can't do that. But understand, your call to action is more like circle the wagons because we're being attacked.
That's right.
Our success of a commercial base and all the other things that happen in the community with growth and all those things that balance is now becoming our enemy.
That's right.
Because as they look at that basic funding formula, we're not going to be there. We're not going to be in the receiving end of that. That's not going to be a plus in some areas for us and.
Make, make them aware, make them aware of that.
Well, what the other piece is our good financial stewardship. We're not a, we're not a district in distress, so now we're going to, that's going to be held against us too because that's good management.
We manage our money properly. Hey, did you say, what, regarding Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, you, I, I misunderstood. Did you say they're a separate entity in all this? How do they fall in all this?
Their form, their, their formula is.
I, I don't know the specifics of how it's going to hit Philadelphia and Pittsburgh.
They will look at Philadelphia and Pittsburgh in, in the same manner, however, because of the factors that were raised with regard to the charter school, they will have to treat Philadelphia and Pittsburgh with some differentials. Because the rest of the state obviously is not facing those same factors.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that they're.
The formula is built on them.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It seems like they're going to move our money over there. So, I mean, I hate to say that, that's the impression I get.
We don't know that.
Well, we don't know that yet, but I got a feeling. I got a feeling.
Well, I can state, I can state unequivocally that the, the two co-chairs of the Basic Education Funding Commission are in the majority party in Harrisburg. They are looking at all facets. So there, there will be that, that balancing that will take place during their discussions as they work through what actually will be phased in for a proposed funding formula. It won't be one of these, you know, slash and burns because they, they won't be able to go back to their district should they do that.
Can I just ask, procedurally, so you have a funding formula that, that you're going to get a report on and then it's presented to whom?
The commission will prepare its report. It must deliver it to the General Assembly by mid-June.
Okay.
At such time, someone will presumably take up that formula as a piece of legislation. Someone will sponsor, seek cosponsors within the General Assembly and then it will run as, as any other bill would run in the General Assembly, which means it has to go through if it's, you know, in the House or the Senate. It has to go through committees, review, and then ultimately.
Okay, so, so for this to become a law, we're, we're looking years?
No, we're looking, we could potentially look at months beyond the June report.
Okay.
The General Assembly is in session, you know, the, the session runs, it started in January 1st of this year and it runs until the end of 2016. So presumably whatever bill comes through has until the end of 2016 to become law.
Do you, do you think that, I mean, you want us to add our voice to others and become active in this process? Because if we don't, we will be burned in this process.
I believe that if you, if you think that there are issues and concerns that, that you have as, as board members, as a community, then they should be raised with, with your legislators. But the, the point of the campaign is to make everyone aware of the situation. Many people are not aware of how education is funded. And this isn't just an issue that is strictly important to school board members or administration. This is something that impacts the entire community.
Okay, so what's the political climate? If this, if this bill was presented today and voted on and presented to the governor for signature, do you think that it would pass the legislation? Do you think it would pass the Senate? And do you think the governor would sign it?
Given, given the force and the, and the bipartisan effort on the commission, then I believe there's a will there. We're, we're working on talking to all of the legislators.
So what's that mean? Does it pass the legislation?
It, it, there's a great potential that if the commission issues a report that looks like, you know, something that everyone is in support of, you have all these organizations that are supporting it, one would hope that the legislature would pass it.
Chris Matthews here. Does it pass the, does it pass the Senate?
Well, I mean, she's the direct, she's the liaison with the government.
Given the fact that the commission is, is, is headed up by Senator Pat Brown, who is in the majority party, and Representative Mike Verrib, who's in the majority party, there is a great likelihood that the numbers would be there for a proposal that the commission brings forth.
And then what's the likelihood that the government would sign it?
Given, given the force that, that so many people have been asking for a funding formula that, and the governor has recognized that there is a need for a funding formula, there is great, great hope that, that this would pass. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, never when it comes to legislation.
I'll, I'll add to that conversation. Well, I'll add to that, John. There, there are a couple of different things here. There's discussion about the way the pie is divided. And then there's also discussion about the size of the pie. So the way the pie is divided would be, is there a formula that determines how the pie is divided? Let's say we take exactly the same pie, we don't add a dollar more to it, we just say the way the pie is divided, will that then be of interest to folks to see, can they have a formula to divide that pie? Right now there are, as Tina said, the Senator Brown, very powerful Republican leader in the Senate, we have Representative Mike Verrib, very powerful member of the House, and Governor Corbett, when he was in office, being one that said, you know what, we need to take a look at this funding and come up with a formula. So there you have Republican interest in doing this. You also have discussion among the Democratic Party with a Democratic governor saying, you know what, we think that the formula needs to be addressed. Now, the next discussion becomes then on the size of the pie. And where will, if you want more money to make the pie larger, where will that come from? That's a whole separate discussion over, should you have a formula to decide how the pie is divided, no matter what the size of the pie is. So I believe that we should have a formula that talks about the distribution of the funds. I think that we need to look at that and see how that would play out. Fly in the ointment will be the size of the pie and the way those funds actually get distributed because most of the recommendations I've seen on the way the funds get distributed, there are districts across the state, primarily not in Montgomery County, but primarily across other parts of the state, that have been held harmless for pretty many years and they don't want to see hold harmless go away. And that's a big deal to them. And I can't recall her name now, but she's on the commission, help me with the name.
Donna Oberlander.
Representative Oberlander is, is one that's, you know, saying, look, I, I will fight to the death, if you will, over the hold harmless clause, you know, because she represents a portion of the state where they really want to hold on to hold harmless.
You know, keep in mind that the calculus here is getting enough votes in each chamber to, to pass a bill.
Here's where the math doesn't add up for me. I'm looking at this list of associations that are supporting or members of this campaign. Now, I rarely see the Pennsylvania Chamber of Business and Industry and the Pennsylvania State Education Association on the same page.
On the same list, yep.
So that, to me, it sounds like everybody that's anybody and very, there's more than powerful organizations out here are in your camp. And I just don't understand why you're having such a hard time.
They're not voting.
Yeah, but they have influence and they do.
They have some influence.
I think everybody agrees that we need to have a fair funding formula where the breakdown will likely occur is when people start looking at how will it affect them individually over this whole thing? And then there'll probably be dispute about that. But we all recognize the one we have now is not good.
Okay, so the hold harmless piece seems to be the whole issue.
That's a major part of this whole thing. I'll get into that.
That is a significant portion of, of the argument that's been happening for months and months now with the start of the commission. As, as Dr. Dietrich said, from the very start, Representative Oberlander stated publicly at the first meeting that hold harmless cannot be touched.
Think about it. How many state legislators are going to vote to cut their own school district's funding?
Yeah, you're right. But like, the larger districts should be able to over, outvote that. I mean, you, like you said yourself.
I will show you the map. It is very instructive though.
I think it's more likely that your, the proposal you mentioned earlier is more likely to, to come forward with, this is hold harmless, you won't go down. The question is going forward, if it's an eight-year balancing plan and it, and whatever increases happen over the eight years, there'd be, there may be some districts, possibly us, that will get nothing for eight years and increase, which means it's bad things to us.
Well, you would never get less. No district is not harmed.
So write that down. Write that down. We're going to get $2,015 for the next eight years. How much is that worth, even three years from now? I mean, to us, that's a huge hit.
Let's work through the numbers. The April 23rd meeting is another time for us to discuss it.
I support the idea of what you're trying to do. I, I really do think though that you're asking a heck of a lot from a bunch of people that have no spines whatsoever when it comes to school district funding. Or we wouldn't even be in this hole in the first place.
I, I just want to try to say something.
Well, you do a darn good job for us. Thank you.
I just think from the very beginning, we said that people are going to have to give and take. If we want the state to have, to do anything educationally, so yes, it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough love, but it really needs to be done and I hope that.
Sure ain't us.
He's right. What legislator is going to vote? Take my money, take my money.
What's our, what's our state dollars in our budget as a percentage? So we get seventeen percent of our budget from the state.
But the average for many districts, they're getting anywhere from thirty-four on up to seventy-five percent from the state.
And you don't think it's going to get worse for us in any way, shape, or form?
Well, the hope is that there will be a balancing out so that you won't be harmed even further.
Yeah, but our budget will grow every year.
I realize that.
It's the same argument, look, it's the same, it's a thirty-five percent argument from our state reps who are in Harrisburg. We're giving school districts more money than ever before, but it doesn't keep pace with all the other things they hand us. So that fifty percent number rolls down to thirty-five percent and they're still standing there saying, we keep giving you more. Well, you give me a dollar and the bill's twenty. That doesn't work out well for us in the long run.
I'm all for the concept of this.
I like the resolution.
It doesn't add up to, I just, it doesn't, I, I don't get, the math doesn't add up.
You have an opportunity to influence seven legislators. That's a lot.
I think we should. Well, we can. We can come out and tell everybody what they're really like to us and how they treat the school district and the taxpayers and how they actually either work with us or against us. We should come out publicly and do that.
Once this, once, once this formula, once this formula comes out of the commission, then there's an opportunity to look at.
Well, yeah, we'll have a real number behind us then.
Your real numbers, you know?
Yeah.
We could be at eighteen percent.
When is this opportunity to influence these seven guys?
When is the opportunity to influence these seven guys?
When is the opportunity? Well, it starts now, but especially once, once this, the commission issues the report, then you, then you can sit down with all seven of them and say, here's, here's how this would impact us.
Yeah, right now you can see, as was presented this evening, there's a number of 7,266. That's the number that gets plugged into, for the statewide average of actual instructional expense number that goes into this formula. So you would multiply that, use your average daily membership, five-year average on that, and start as a starting point, make some adjustments for those student-specific weights like the poverty and the ELL, the homeless, the foster, that kind of a thing. Also take into account then those district-specific weighting, your sparsity, your tax effort, your local wealth, run all those numbers, plug in there the impact of charter schools. And that number that I talked about initially there, depending on when that number is, you will see a different outcome. Either you're going to need a larger pie if you make that number larger, or if you want to run the same size of the pie, you will have more districts then that are impacted by hold harmless. That's the way the math works out, as simple as that.
Do you think that kind of a formula is going to turn out to be like the accountability with block grants that we got where they said they increased our funding, but then the strings that came with it made it impossible to spend the money or use it?
No, I, this would look more like what occurred during the 2008 costing out study process, where it was looking at the actual factors.
Right, right. Well, I do want to thank again our presenters this evening for coming out and bringing this to the attention of our viewing audience and those that are present this evening with us. And I thank all the board members for your input on this. I do want to encourage you again to come April 23rd. If you're watching at home, please come out this evening, of course, all board members. We do have Representative Kate Harper and Representative Todd Stevens have agreed to be with us this evening. We did invite all of the representatives and the senators from our community. Those two are available to come and be with us this evening, so we're looking forward to their interaction and also the interaction of our, our public. So thank you again and.
I would like to make at our action meeting, I'd like to propose the resolution that you brought, add our voice to the many.
That'd be great.
Thanks for coming out, Laura, Tina.
Yeah, thank you. Maybe it didn't seem like I appreciated, but I did.
Tina and I would also like to personally thank, you know, invite you to the open house of the IU, our new building, the 24th.
Twenty-fourth.
Friday from three to six, and we would love to have you all there.
So what's it like, Tina, working, working as the government liaison?
Excuse me?
How's it like working with the government, going to Harrisburg, meeting all those faces when you were a board member and they were throwing rocks at us?
So, well, as Jerome knows from my days in, in my district, because she covered us. us down in Cheltenham, I was always working on the legislative scene for many years, trying to, to make a difference. So it, it just, you know, it's, it's a give and take. It's a give and take.
Thank you.
Great efforts, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
That's all we have tonight.
Do you want to adjourn? They got, they got, what, what?
Well, we want a public comment. If anybody would like to share, anybody would like to come forward? Public comment time. Okay. Now we will move to adjourn.
Yeah, so.
Uh, wait a minute, one more comment. We did have an executive session tonight from seven, eight, uh, o'clock to 7:30, where